Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the February 18, 2014 work session of the Washington County Board of Education. Today we'll be discussing the superintendent's recommended FY 2015 budget. Just to sort of lay the groundwork for how I think we're going to approach today, first, I'm going to invite the superintendent to present his budget. And in the course of his presenting his budget, I'd like to ask him that if he has any specific direction that he or his team are looking for from the board as we go forward, to make that clear as we go through his presentation. Following his presentation of the budget that he plans to recommend to the board, we'll have some time for questions from board members. And if there are any suggestions or ideas from board members, I'd like to sort of keep a list of those, so that as we get to the end of the work session, we can then go and see if there's direction one way or the other that board members would like to provide with respect to each of the suggestions that board members may have made during the discussion. So with that as sort of the background and how I think we intend to approach it, I'll turn it over to Dr. Wilcox.
Thank you, Dr. Hardees, board members. Today, we're going to present our 2015 budget. I want to say to you from the outset that we think this budget is both respectful of our state and local funders. We believe it is very respectful of the taxpayers of this community, and it is focused on achieving greater results with the school system's resources. We believe that we have taken a great deal of effort to make sure the budget is both lean and fiscally responsible, and also that it will position us to meet the challenges of not only today, but of tomorrow. Our revenue picture is very positive. Our state dollars are up year over year, and we've completed a rebalancing of accounts where we looked at actual to actual to actual, which was also very positive in helping to right-size some of our budgets. We've also made some reductions that you probably have read about to our baseline budgets, which even after netting them out with the additions that we made during the course of the year, left us in a very positive financial position. We did incur some new expenses in 2014. We'll walk you through those in a while. They were primarily in the area of personnel that were directed to meet student needs. One example that I might throw out right now are the nurses that we hired during the year to serve students who had a specified IEP need. Again, we think that we have a very responsive and responsible budget. All in all, we anticipate a fiscally challenging, but not overly so challenging year this year. We have plans to strengthen our delivery of services. You'll see that by some of the things that we bring forward. We also have, I think respectfully attacked some of the board's priorities, and we have tried our very best to make sure that we are respectful of our teachers and our support staff workers by actually building a salary resource pool that will allow us to begin conversations with our team members. Overall, I would say we offer a balanced budget that is respectful of our commitment and obligations. It is, again, responsible to our employees, and I believe it is respectful of the direction that this board has set in terms of student achievement and creating a school district that is responsive to its community. With that, I will share with you that I'm going to turn the bulk of the presentation over to Chris and his team. They'll walk you through the budget in a line item by line item way. Please, if you have questions, you can either stop Chris in midstream, or if you want to just write them, and we'll try to address them all at once. Whatever is your pleasure, an individual board member, we will react to. Okay? So, Chris?
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. We're going to start with revenue, obviously, and we're going to work from an incremental standpoint, like we have done in years past, beginning with the local revenue. Our traditional maintenance of effort requirement this year will increase by $214,000, and this includes a wealth adjustment for the net taxable income legislation that was passed last year. The legislated teacher pension transfer cost will also increase. That number will increase by about $178,000, and that number comes directly from the bill that was passed. The revenue from prior year surplus for the business software will decrease by $1.5 million in FY 14. As you recall, in the current year, we took $1,005,000, in addition, out of fund balance, in addition to the $1,005,000 out of the baseline for a total of $3 million toward the ERP back office software. That number will go down to $1,000,500 next year, coming, all of it coming from the baseline. So, we will not be taking that money from fund balance next year. That gives us over the two-year period, $4.5 million toward that project, and we believe that that will adequately address all of the needs that have been identified by the ERP implementation team. But we are going to be extracting $500,000 from the revenue from prior year surplus or the fund balance to repurpose the 701 Frederick Street property, and we can talk about that a little bit more in detail as we move through. State revenue and other revenue, the first iteration of the state aid formula, I'm sorry.
Would you like board members to hold all their questions to the end, or if they need clarification on something that you're describing, is it okay if they jump in?
Either way, Dr. Hardees, it's fine. Either way.
Board members, either way.
I had a question about the revenue for prior year surplus and to retrofit 701 Frederick Street property. I was a little concerned about that because I thought that we were in discussions for what we were going to do with that.
That is just a placeholder at this point.
There have been no --
Because --
I'm just saying, you're exactly right. What we did is we budgeted some money. So, when we have the discussion, we have some money to fulfill whatever the dreams are that we have. We are still positioning ourselves to say to you, we'd like to do some type of public service academy there, but we've not had any of that conversation.
Okay. So, it's a placeholder?
Yes, ma'am.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Question on that. Is there any chance that that would qualify as a systemic program that we could use capital money instead of operating money? Would there be any chance on that?
There could be once we get to the point where we define the program, but right now, I think it's premature.
Because we're talking classrooms and -- okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the local revenue? If not, we can move on to the state and other revenue. As I mentioned, the state aid, the preliminary or first iteration of the state aid formula shows an increase of almost $5 million from the final FY 14 appropriation. And the final adjustment to the FY 14 MSD, state aid for net taxable income legislation, was $556,000. That, of course, was not in the budget that was approved last year, so that was an adjustment that we're making post-FY 14 budget approval. There is a reduction to the expected interest income of approximately $125,000. Two things causing that. One, as anybody who's made any investments themselves know, interest rates are not that great right now. But the bigger item is the reduction in the amount of fund balance due to the funding that we expended on this building that we're currently in. And then, as Dr. Wilcox mentioned, we did rebalance the budget, and at the end of the rebalancing, there was an addition of $91,100 to the revenue side of the equation. If there's any questions on estate or other revenue, I'd be glad to take them now. If not, we can move on.
On the disparity grant, have we received any thoughts from the county commissioners as to how that may be shared?
We have not.
So, that brings the total expected incremental revenue to $4,879,000. In addition to new revenues, we did make some, or we are recommending some reductions to the baseline. And the any reductions to the baseline, as you know, also free up dollars for the initiatives in the coming year, in FY 15. So, during FY 14 and after the 14 budget was approved, the number of contingency teachers, we reduced that from 10 to 5 for a reduction of $339,000. We reduced our health insurance premium from 3% to 1% after the budget was approved last year. That's bringing us another savings of $564,000. We're right sizing the special education non-public placements, bringing in a savings of about $145,000 there, and also right sizing the additional pay and the travel lines in the capital outlay category, bringing us another $10,000 in savings. Contracted outside legal fees had been bumped up several years ago due to several large legal matters for which we used outside services. Over the past couple of years, we have settled in around $50,000. So, we're reducing that $100,000 outside legal fee line down by $50,000. Outside consultants, reduction of $25,000, and professional development related expenses in the human resources area, savings of approximately $20,000. And also, during FY 14, we did eliminate 13 teacher positions, excuse me, through attrition, and that was a savings of $881,000.
Can you explain what those 13 teacher positions were? Just so, just for clarity, what?
Those -- you want to say that? You want me to?
Go ahead, start.
Those were positions that we had requested from the instructional staff to eliminate or to identify as positions that could be eliminated, and they brought those positions back to the senior staff with a recommendation to eliminate those 13 positions. Those were, as I said, no one, there were no layoffs or anything related to those. Those were strictly positions that were identified and were achieved through attrition and transfers.
Yeah, I could say specifically, we had six at the elementary level. Specifically, they were at Bester, Connecajig, Fountaindale, Hickory, and Potomac Heights, and Greenbrier. We eliminated one social studies position at Smithsburg Middle School. We had a health PE teacher at Boonsboro that we took at the time. We had another middle school math teacher. And then, at the high school level, we had a number of consumer sciences positions totaling four. So, that was the 13 positions.
Okay. Thank you.
Would those positions, unfilled positions, stay in the budget, or we're eliminating those?
We're eliminating them now, so that they are in fact a savings. And we've also gone back, just so you know, of course, during the course of the year, we do monitor overall pupil teacher ratios. So, where someone would say, well, what happened at Bester Elementary? We could look at Bester today, it's 427 students. If we look at just classroom teachers and Title I teachers, the pupil teacher ratio there is still 21 to 1, which is a very good ratio. We could also take a look and put in all of the other teachers who are non, that include non-special ed, but just support teachers there, and then the ratio drops to 13.6 to 1. So, they're still well-resourced.
Jack?
Well, we have some schools who are going down in population. We also have had some that have surprisingly gone up, and I know we had one or two issues this year where parents said, "We need more teachers in this school. Our classes are too crowded." I'm concerned that, I mean, I know our numbers have been dropping a little bit, or still increasing, but dropping a little bit year by year, but I'm a little bit hesitant to get down to five contingency teachers and have 13 eliminations.
Well, that certainly would be the, I mean, obviously, we would like more teachers. So, if the board directs us to go in that direction, we would certainly look that way. I will tell you, though, we have reviewed all of pupil teacher ratios. And the thing, when you play with numbers at this level, it's the old adage, liars, you know, averages make liars of us all. But, because I know that as soon as I say this, in order to get to an average of 25 to 1, somebody's got 30 and somebody's got 20. Kids don't come in nice and neat packages. So, you have to be very careful with this. But we are respectful that our overall averages for elementary schools across the system is 15 to 1, when you put all teachers in. So, that's a pretty expensive model to maintain. At the same time, it's not unbelievable that we couldn't continue to sustain it. So, I think, let's come back to that as we go, and we can talk specifically about what adding one or two teachers might do to help us.
Right. And I would point out, these are not proposed eliminations. These are eliminations that have been made in FY 14. What we're doing here is we're putting in the reductions we made for 14 to be carried forward.
And this is what codifying what is already?
Adjusting the budget to carry forward. We also eliminate, we also eliminated one elementary assistant principal. That's at Fountaindale. One high school assistant principal position that we've been carrying for several years at Hancock Middle Senior High School. And we eliminated the director of curriculum development position for a savings of $132,000. And that was, we've been carrying that in the budget for two or three years now due to the untimely death of Dr. Harold. I would like to point out also that these dollars that you're seeing here, related to these various positions, are not just salary dollars. They also contain, they also have the benefit dollars in there also. So, if they seem a little bit high, this is salary and benefits that we're looking at on each one of these. We also eliminated one administrative assistant this past year. That was the administrative assistant who previously reported to Shula Finkelstein. And of course, Shula's position had been eliminated, and the administrative assistant position, once vacated, was eliminated also. This year, we converted three bus contractor routes to in-house routes for savings of about $14,000, and that was based on an analysis that was recommended by the legislative auditor. If you recall, in the audit that we received about a year and a half ago now, one of the comments in the transportation area was that we should analyze each route, and we have been doing that, as each route, either an in-house person retires or moves on, or a contract comes up for renewal, we are evaluating each of those routes to make sure that we are filling that route in the most cost-effective way. And these three routes were previously held by bus contractors, and when we ran the numbers through the model, it came out in favor of in-house routes. So, we did convert those three routes to in-house routes. And when I say in-house, I'm talking about run by our, we own the bus now, and we have our driver in that bus. We are eliminating the one-time expense for business software. As I mentioned, $1.5 million that I mentioned before will be not utilized this year, so that the, there will be $1.5 million in the budget, down from $3 million in FY 15, giving us, again, a total of $4.5 million for that project.
Mr. South, I didn't jump in quick enough on the contract. Does that, the bus contractor routes, does that eliminate any contractor?
That did not eliminate any contractor in the midst of their run, in the midst of their contract. We're only analyzing contracts, Mr. Bailey, when the contract comes to the end of its 12 years. So, we did not go in and buy out a contractor, or nor did we have a contractor who had an investment that lost their investment because of a move we made. It was simply, we made these analyses before the contractor, we notified the contractor before they had an opportunity to make another $100,000 investment in a bus.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Chris or Dr. Wilcox, either one. With, I'll go back a little bit. I apologize, didn't jump in quick enough, but I wanted to hear everything. The two eliminated principals, which I think we did with Hancock, we utilized an intern up there for a while?
Correct.
Is that going to continue?
Yes.
How about Fountaindale? Will there be an intern to replace this individual?
No, there will not be an intern there. They have two lead teachers, however, who provide another level of support that other schools that size don't enjoy. So, we have not thought about adding an assistant principal back there.
So, the principal and the assistant principal are going to be able to handle all the evaluations and all the other?
We think the principal will be able to handle them, but something we'll have to monitor. They're about the same size now as some of our other single principal schools.
Wait, didn't Hancock have a social worker as well positioned up? Wasn't it a split?
It was a counselor position. We added full-time to them.
Can I ask one more question? I apologize. What types of responsibilities are the lead teachers? You say there are two there now. What types of responsibilities can they assume that an assistant principal or a principal would typically do? Maybe Mike can answer. I mean, what, I mean, there are certain things that a, you know, assistant principal has the authority and training to do that a lead teacher, I can't think would or should.
Really, the only thing that the lead teachers do is they help on the instructional side, the monitoring instruction. They don't help with evaluation. They don't help with discipline, a number of things. But please remember that these are not proposed cuts. These have actually worked this year. We've not heard any concerns or complaints from the principal there. At least, I've not, and I don't think Dr. Marco has.
The last adjustment to the baseline budget that we have is to adjust the FY 14 budgeted salaries to actual. Obviously, when we were creating the FY 14 budget, we were using FY 13 salaries. Just like, as we move into FY 15, we will continue the salaries of the folks that are currently in our employ, knowing full well that some of those folks are going to leave us, going to retire, going to move on, going to have spouses that move out of the area, those kinds of things that happen over the summer. This is an adjustment that we have to do every year in order to get the budgets in line. If not, they would just continue to snowball and would compound itself year after year after year to where we would be tens of millions of dollars out of balance on our salary lines at the budget time a couple of years from now. So, bringing that all together, that brings our total reductions to the baseline expenditures to $6.3 million, and the amount available to And the amount available to be used for the FY fifteen initiatives, an incremental revenue of four point nine million, which we discussed a while ago, reductions in baseline budget of six point three, which we just finished discussing, makes an amount available of eleven point two million dollars for the FY fifteen initiatives. So what are those initiatives that we're, that we're looking at? We have several, several categories of initiatives. The first is expenditures that we committed in FY fourteen that will recur in fifteen and beyond. And one of those is an elementary reading supervisor that we added for approximately one hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. One elementary teacher that was previously a Title I teacher that was brought over into the general fund for approximately sixty-eight thousand dollars. Guidance counselor Ruth Ann Monroe for, again, approximately sixty-eight thousand dollars. One special ed para-pro. Four LPNs, as Dr. Wilcox mentioned earlier, to address IEP one-on-one issues. One transportation routing specialist, this is the specialist that works the software that addresses the analysis that was required by the, or was very strongly suggested by the legislative auditors. And finally, one additional custodian for the central office, just due to the increased square footage, for approximately forty-six thousand dollars. If there's any questions on this page or this slide, we certainly would be glad to address those. If not, we'll move on to some additional expenditures that we committed in fourteen that will recur again in fifteen and beyond. The Middle College Essence Program with HCC is coming in at around a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. If you recall, this is in response to the dual enrollment legislation that was passed in the two thousand thirteen legislature, that basically created another unfunded mandate for us, in our case, approximately a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. The school nurse program, we had an increase.
Chris, could I?
Sure.
The middle col, how many students will that, a hundred and fifty thousand?
Well, this is, this is both Middle College and the Essence Program.
And Essence.
We still have a hundred and seventy kids in Essence, and about, wow, and about ten students have the early college program right now on campus.
Jet.
And we would expect the middle college to bump up by what?
We hope that the middle college will bump up to thirty in the class next year, and sixty ultimately.
Do you see the Essence program dropping in Oregon?
I do, I do, because I think it's going to become a bigger hassle for parents because of the way the funding works, that we will then build back those parents who are now, instead of just having a split tuition, well, I think it's going to become more problematic for parents.
We can't hear down here with, would you all speak up? I couldn't hear Donna before that started running, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jack. Why not?
Jamie, can you see if you punch the button and shut it off?
I think Boyd went to sleep.
You just want to ask the question again, so that we can be sure that everybody has heard it?
I had asked about middle college, and how many students that those dollars would serve, and Clayton had mentioned the Essence program, and was answering that.
And the answer is, the Essence program accounts for the great majority of this funding. We have about ten students right now, eleven students, I believe, who are in the middle college program. We expect that to grow to approximately thirty next year, that's our hope. Ultimately, we hope to have it up to sixty kids on campus at any one time, thirty juniors, thirty seniors.
How many did you say were in the Essence right now?
I believe we had a hundred and seventy kids enrolled early on.
The next item is the AED Annual Maintenance Contract, twenty thousand dollars. If you'll recall, several years ago, there was legislation which required us to put automatic external defibrillators in all of our schools, particularly around where we have athletic events, and there is, there's annual, annual costs related to that, they have to be, they have to be maintained, they have to be certified on a, on an annual basis, and that's a twenty thousand dollar cost there, which we really never, we covered in previous budgets, but never really identified a particular line item for that, and now we do have that identified. School Resource Officer Coverage, we increased school resource officers by approximately thirty-two thousand dollars this year, that was to, excuse me, to add some additional coverage, additional officer. Contributions were adjusted upwards by six, six thousand dollars, and the budget rebalancing on the expenditure side was, again, ninety-one thousand dollars, which offsets the budget, the rebalancing that we did on the revenue side, so that is still in balance. And then there was the unbudgeted salary increase of two and a half million dollars after the approval of the FY fourteen budget, so that was put in, in FY fourteen, and will obviously be part of the baseline as we move forward. We also had, we also have some expenditures that will be new for two thousand fifteen, but we know about already. Two special education teachers and eleven special education para-pros were funded in two thousand fourteen via some grant funds that were, what I'll call run-out funds, they were left over from a prior grant. These individuals were hired, if we're going to, if we're going to continue these folks, which our special education staff believes that we do need to continue these folks, we're going to, we're going to need to put those in the FY fifteen budget. Obviously, the TeachScape Observation and Professional Development Tool of a hundred thousand dollars, which the board has talked about on numerous occasions. The match, the, our matching portion of the TIF grant for the final year will be an increase of approximately five hundred sixty thousand dollars. If you'll recall, that was a grant that brought seven million dollars to the school system about five years, over a five-year period, and this is the final year of that.
Chris, do you know what all the matches over that number of years would equal?
I do not, Mrs. Pryman, but we certainly can get that from.
No, the, our matching amount to receive that. I know we spent three hundred and eighty-four on a thousand, on evaluators, and I'm trying to figure out match, what we cleared after the matches and after the evaluators, what we actually cleared out of that seven million.
We can get that number for you. I don't have that key, you're looking for the cumulative five-year number, correct?
Exactly.
Yes, ma'am, we can get that for you.
We're in the final year, I think it would be of interest to know what we actually cleared after all of that.
We can certainly get that for you.
Thank you.
And while we may spend the, whatever it is, five hundred sixty thousand additional dollars this year to achieve the match from the TIF grant, next year, we should see all those TIF grant dollars be a save, because we won't have to spend it next year to match, so those should be, those should, those should be available dollars next year.
Not the cumulative amount, but what's in the FY fifteen budget will be, will be available for other purposes that the board might, the board might want to use it for in sixteen. Yes, sir. School buses this year, just based upon the number and types of buses, are going to be about a hundred thirty-seven thousand, a hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars more in fifteen than what, than what we experienced in fourteen. Property insurance premium is going up about eleven thousand five hundred dollars, based almost solely on square, on increase in square footage. We actually have a, have a declining experience modification factor, which is good news. So what we're seeing there is based solely on what's happening in the market and what's happening with our square footage.
Is that through the MAE pool?
Yes, that is through the MAE pool. The additional teacher pension costs, again, this is a legislated number, we pulled that right out of the legislation that was passed now three years ago. Other contracted services, five thousand dollar increase there, related primarily to your legislative services of your, of your representative in Annapolis, the board's representative, Mrs. Cade. And the board dues for NSBE, NSBA, excuse me, and MAE will increase four thousand five hundred dollars next year. Any questions on that slide?
On the school buses, where are we on the replacement schedule? Are we?
We, we have it figured out for the next number of years to try to level off with fifteen, sixteen buses.
We're not going to need additional, because enrollment's sort of flat, so I'm thinking, okay.
Any other questions on the known increases? So then we can move to some expected or recommended increases for FY fifteen. One Director of Instructional Technology for a hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars. We did utilize the five contingency teachers that we had in the current year budget, those positions are filled, so we're adding five contingency teachers for FY fifteen, just for spikes in enrollment at particular locations. That's approximately three hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars. Seven athletic trainers, I think the board has, and the superintendent had discussed those on occasion. Four mentor teachers at three hundred fourteen thousand dollars. This next item I'd like to expound on a little bit, the one school auditor, and that is to convert to an employee position of forty, approximately forty-four thousand dollars. Our current auditing, school auditor is a contracted employee, excuse me, an independent contractor. She has, she works approximately half-time, she has indicated to me that this may be her final year. Keeping in mind that we would want to probably replace that person with a CPA, it would probably be pretty tough to find a certified person who would be willing to work part-time. So what you're seeing there is utilizing the dollars that we currently have in the, in the contracted services line for an internal auditor, internal auditor or school auditor, and adding a half, basically a half-time to that, to that amount. This is a contingency that we're putting in the budget, because this individual has not notified us officially that she would be leaving, but we felt that the number was large enough that we probably should get it out there in front of the board in case we, in case we do need to pull the trigger on that. The OECD test cost of twenty-four thousand dollars is also an item that we're recommending for FY fifteen.
Clayton, how many students, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Will be taking that test, is that?
It'd be three high schools with up to eighty-five kids in each high school.
We're paying the entire test cost?
Actually, the test cost is brought down by OECD. We're paying a portion of the cost for those schools that volunteered to take it.
Any other questions on this slide? If not, we can move forward. Some additional recommended increases in expenditures for FY fifteen include an increase in substitute, substitute teacher pay of about ten, of ten percent, for a cost of about two hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. As you recall, we haven't done anything with teacher substitute pay probably for six to ten years, so that's something that we really need to take, take a hard look at. The social media monitoring software will increase security in our schools by monitoring cyberbullying and that sort of thing, that may be coming from students who are on our campuses. The half million dollars that we talked about earlier to repurpose the Frederick Street property, again, this is a placeholder. This would be the use of that money, we talked about bringing the money from the fund balance into the revenue, when we talked about the revenue. We're projecting a one percent, at this time, a one percent health insurance premium increase, which will cost us approximately two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, and that brings us down to a, the last item that we're recommending is a, an salary increase pool of nearly three point seven million dollars.
Chris, is that one percent health insurance, a good number?
We believe that's probably a solid number at this time, yes.
I thought the salary pool included the substitutes.
No, the salary pool is for, for employees only, not substitutes.
I thought I read that somewhere else.
So moving on, to summarize our incremental expenditures, we did have, we did commit some expenditures in fourteen, approximately three point six million dollars worth that will carry forward into fifteen and beyond. We have known increases in expenditures that we're going to need to put in the budget of approximately one point seven million dollars, and we're recommending additional increases in expenditures for two thousand fifteen of five point nine, or nearly six million dollars, bringing us down to a total incremental expenditures of eleven point two million dollars. Now, if we take our incremental revenue that we talked about earlier of four point nine million dollars, add to that the reductions to the baseline budget of six point three million dollars, subtract out our incremental expenditures that we just talked about of eleven point two million dollars, brings us down to a, to no excess or no shortfall, ergo, a balanced budget, again, for the coming year. The incremental budget is balanced, therefore, the entire budget is balanced. In summary, the superintendent is presenting a balanced budget. The local revenue is projected at maintenance of effort, plus the necessary funding to cover the teacher pension cost increase, less a reduction in revenue from prior year surplus. The incremental revenue from the state is significantly more than what it was last year, in fact, it's almost twice what it was last year. Our reductions to the baseline budget are going to provide us with additional funds needed for, for needed expenditure increases, and the new expenditures are equal to the incremental revenues, plus the baseline reductions. As Dr. Wilcox mentioned earlier on, the recommended budget has been rebalanced to make individual budget lines consistent with the three-year average spending, or the three-year average revenues. And the superintendent's recommended budget is balanced at two hundred fifty-nine million three hundred thousand dollars.
And so before we turn it over to the board for questions, just a couple of comments. One, I want to make sure that the board knows how much I depend on Eric, David, and Chris to prepare this, but they also have a support team downstairs that really is second to none for a small district, the secretaries, the support staff, whether they be in the purchasing department, accounts payable, all do a great job to get us to a position like this. So I want to make sure that, at this time of year, we say thank you to them, because they are burning the midnight oil. I saw David the other day, he actually had that green shade hat on, so you don't get to see that very often either. I also want to say, some of this represents a bit of a crystal ball, there are some things in here that we just have a good idea about, but we have no real clear indication. For example, we are in negotiations right now, and we may settle for some number significantly less than that when we look at what we're able to do, or we may come up a little bit higher than that number. But that's the result of having negotiations with people. Sometimes in negotiations, there are trade-offs for things versus money, so we're going to have honest and open negotiations. We don't yet have a real clear picture on what it might take, for example, to repurpose the building based on board discussions, where we now have the maintenance and facilities group, couldn't say that. I would also say that there's no money in this budget right now for systemic renovations. We could have a roof or another problem, and right now, you know, the county has basically zero-funded us for systemic renovation, so that money that we see in there as a pool or some of those other monies may be repurposed at some time with the consent of the board. Right now, they are placeholders, if you will. Wow. The next, wow, I like that. To our guys downstairs, there's a huge echo in here right now. That said. That said, one other thing that is fast approaching is the park assessments. We are looking at the technology that we have in place, and we have a good technology plan, but there may be the need to purchase some additional hardware or software in order to make sure that these tests are given flawlessly. We'll know more after the beta test, which is coming up in just the next couple of months. But again, the budget for us is a working, living, breathing document, and so we hope you'll approach the conversation in that way, knowing that Chris is not really in a position to say, this is all we're ever going to spend on this particular line, but rather it is a plan that this board will use to execute its expectations. Okay. Great, thank you. Questions?
Four questions. Let me follow up with what Dr. Wilcox was saying. An alkyte for the staff, that 2009, 2010, it cost $11,276 to send one student through the Washington County Public Schools. Everyone that sent a child to Washington County Schools cost $11,276. On these numbers for FY15, the number is still only $11,780, which is about fourth-best in the state as far as cost per pupil is concerned. I think that's a really, an outstanding number and outstanding fact to know.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Ms. Fisher?
I've got a couple little questions, but my big question is this. You say new, pardon me, new state funds are probably going to double from last year. I kind of look at that event as happening because it's an election year, and I know there's a review of Thornton coming up, and I know the state budget is in trouble. So could this drop precipitously next year? And if that does, anything we spend new state money on this year could disappear, at least half of that could disappear. Therefore, should we only spend this increased money on one-time expenses?
As you're aware, or as we have discussed previously, the state aid formula is based upon three, primarily upon three factors: enrollment, poverty, and wealth, county wealth So far as it being an election year, the amount per pupil, which is the number that you start with to build what I call the pot of state aid money that eventually gets split up via the formula, that pot only increased by 1 percent, which is about what it's been increasing for about the last four or five years. So I don't think there was any election year gerrymandering or gerrymandering on the pot of money to start with. A lot of things fell in our favor this year. Our enrollment was up. While it's hard to say that poverty being up is in your favor, our poverty indicator was up in Washington County again this year, and our state, our wealth per pupil actually dropped again in Washington County this year. Now, that being said, that's how those three factors and the 1 percent increase in the total pot was how this number was arrived at, the $4.9 million from the state. As we're all aware, the pot of money does not increase or decrease depending on any one particular county's needs. It's all relative. So this year, we were relative to all of the other LEAs in the state. We came out with a higher need or a fairly high need compared to our cohort.
I think, Chris, may I add, I think one of the things that you're seeing is a reflection of the fact that the rest of Maryland is recovering at a faster pace than we are.
Yes.
And so our relative standing against other colleagues put us in a position where we were the beneficiary of the funding formula. It worked as it was designed.
What if it doesn't work that way next year?
We have no way of knowing whether it will or not, but, and that's why we have to wait, that's why I and my staff cannot calculate what state aid is going to be just by sitting down with a formula, because everything is so relative, and you have to look at the state as a whole, which MSD does. But there's no reason to think that that would drastically flip from us being in a relatively needy situation to being in a relatively wealthy situation over a one-year period. There may be some sort of a trend that might start, should we come up with some additional industries or what have you in our area, which would, obviously, the real estate of an additional industry or two would affect the wealth and very possibly the poverty by putting folks back to work, moms and dads back to work. But that's something that's probably going to come more over a trend as opposed to a violent flip from one year to the other.
And I think our trend lines are pretty clear. From 13 consecutive years, we've grown relatively slowly, kind of slow and steady progress, although there were a few kind of bump years. And our free and reduced lunch prices, not prices, but our participation has gone from 23 to 48 percent over that same period of time. So our trend lines are pretty clear, and we really seem to be running away from the rest of Maryland in a, probably in a bad way in some ways. I want to get back, though, to your point, Ms. Fisher, because you make a good point about the political nature of these kinds of things. I think the formula somewhat insulates people from the political side. The place where you might see that is in the CIP funding, where, you know, it is easy to pump $25 million or X number of million dollars on top of the $250 million. The example would be last year, they added almost $50 million to the CIP fund so that we could do certain things. This year, there's probably going to be $25 million to address technology needs across the state, so the 250 go to 275. But that's, again, I think, the only place where I see a real opportunity for somebody to say, well, let's just pump it up because it is a year that's an important year. Although in this case, I think it's really because people are staring down the headlights of the park assessments, and they just know something has to be done.
I'd like to ask one other big-picture question following up on what Mrs. Fisher has asked. Several months ago, representatives of the Washington County Teachers Association and the Washington County ESP came to speak to the board during the public comment period and encouraged us and encouraged you that we write a budget that we believe meets the needs of the system without regard to whether that necessarily stays within the maintenance of effort formula. So that if we believe, or you believe, that to meet the needs of the system, we need to go beyond maintenance of effort, that we should be willing to go to the county commissioners to ask them for that additional funding so that we can meet what we believe the needs of the system are. I think that's a fair representation of what those two groups came and said to this board. So I would just like to ask you, do you believe that this budget that you've put together and are prepared to offer next week or in a couple of weeks at a board meeting, do you believe that this budget that you've proposed that is within maintenance of effort meets the needs of the system in the spirit in which that suggestion was made to us as a board? Do you understand the question?
Yes, and yes. I do believe that as long as this county continues to fund maintenance of effort, we, at the level that they are funding, we will be able to provide the education that this community's citizens have come to expect for their young people and their families. I would say to you as a board, in preparing this budget, one of the things I looked at is really trying to make sure that, you know, we were respectful of all the different constituencies, knowing that we had to serve special needs kids outside of IDEA, knowing that we had to do some things with respect to technology and other things in the district. The one place that I might look at this budget again would be in that salary resource pool because there are places where I could use more hands, not just more expensive hands. But at this time, I am very comfortable, or I would not have brought it to you with the budget as it is presented. But as a superintendent, having additional dollars for additional classroom teachers, probably interventionists at some of our schools where kids are struggling the most, or for additional summer programs would be something that I would look at.
Other questions from board members?
Race to the top funding and the TIF funding, this is all final year on that. Where do you see positions attached to those dollars? Are we going to be absorbing them, programs? How do you see that shifting to our base or not?
I'd have to answer it in two ways. First, with TIF, I think we've learned an awful lot, but I'm not sure that what we've learned and what we've experienced would merit us, the school system, continuing to make the payments that are associated with the TIF dollars to the individual classroom teachers, which is another reason why I would like to be able to do something within the salary resource pool for teachers, because I realize that some teachers are really benefiting from having been at a TIF school. I think there are probably some race-to-the-top positions that we would continue to have, and we'd have to come to you in the next budget cycle and talk about those specifically, but I can't think that every single position would be something that we would continue. Right now, I'd be hard-pressed to speak to a specific position.
I was just thinking philosophically.
Philosophically, I don't think you would see us come to you and ask for resources to continue a TIF-like or TIF-light program. I don't think you'd see that, but I'd really want to talk with others in the district before I made a final declaration.
And the student discipline regs that we've all sort of been agonizing over, that student liaison, can that be absorbed by existing staffing and the behavioral health? I'm wondering, because that kicks in this coming school year.
The behavioral health may be something we'll have to start looking at contracted dollars for. I reread the regulations again today. I am particularly concerned where the regulation says that every principal will have a staff member that ensures the continuity of services to the student. Right now, you would think that we would have the people to do that, but until you actually see it play out against specific discipline numbers, you just don't know. That's why I say, you know, there may be a few positions yet in that salary resource pool that I'd like to pull out, but we just don't know yet. But that's going to be a huge issue for us.
That's what I was thinking. The rebalancing of the budget or rebasing on the 12, 13 actuels and the 14 budget to come up with this one? I don't know if that hasn't been specified before, that we've done it before, is this something new? And how do you feel that giving us a more realistic mark?
I think, given that it's, Chris, can you correct me if I'm wrong, it's actuels to actuels to actuels, right?
Yes, it's.
Because the 14, because the 14 budget, we still have budget, so it'd be actuels for 12 and 13.
There's actuels for 13, 12, and 11.
11, 12, and 13.
So you're doing.
Three years of action.
Three actuels rather than you're not putting the 14 budget in.
We don't average off of a budget. So, and that is, you know, I know the finance team does that on a regular basis, but it's the first time we're really bringing it to you and saying, here's what we've done, in my memory.
Are we doing that by department or just overall?
We look at line by line.
Line by line.
In the department, it's almost zero base in the department?
I wouldn't go so far as to describe it as zero base, but what we did is we looked at their actual expense versus their actual expense versus their actual expense over three years.
Okay.
Okay? And that's all in order to make sure that people are getting the resources that they need, but not more than they need. The other kind of allocation that we'll begin looking at is when are they spending it, but that's down the road a little bit with our new software system. Because I have a philosophical belief that resources, if they're not being saved for a special project, should be spent in a rough approximation of the budget year, meaning that if dollars, if you've got $100 to go over 10 months, you should be spending about $10 a month in order to spend it all by the time you get there, if your budget is right-sized. That's not a hard and fast rule, but it is something that every month, Chris provides me the sheets. What I look at is what's the percentage of budget that has been spent, what's the percentage of budget that's been encumbered? Every month, I look at it line by line.
As we do in the finance committee. Maybe not to the detail you, maybe our report doesn't have the detail that yours does, but we look at an approximation of that as well.
Yeah.
Just so everybody knows.
Well, I think the community should know that we do that.
Absolutely.
I have a couple specific asks, but I don't know if someone else.
I.
Do you want to go again, Mr. Bailey?
Comment on the inclusion of athletic trainers in seven high schools at around $400,000. Those roles will need to be defined, I suspect, once the people are in place. They may not do actual athletic training eight hours a day.
Mr. Bailey, they probably would not, just so you know, that we have a pilot project going on right now at North High, where we are actually trying to define that role and see what's going on. Oftentimes, it's related to injury management. It's also preventive management. Those folks have actually talked to us about speaking to our athletes during the day about diet, exercise, general overall health, so I think we will be defining that over time if, in fact, we enter into a contract. And I have some very specific metrics that I'm looking at right now, based on some work that Eric and Mike have done for us to actually get three proposals.
Can you look upon those people being trainers of other people?
Train the trainer, Mark.
Train the trainer, yeah.
I think we could look at that, but these people have very specific expertise in certification, certification that they could not pass on to, say, a coach, but certainly a coach who was with them would learn proper taping techniques, would learn certain other techniques to help their athletes, absolutely.
Along those lines, I had a discussion with a coach the other day who suggested that if we do get athletic trainers, that they could even maybe train some of the athletes themselves to do things like taping ankles and the basic.
I think there is that possibility, Ms. Fisher, absolutely.
I think, and you and I talked about this once, I think they could be an asset, community asset. They don't have to be specifically for a high school. We have a lot of schools, you know, Boomsborough, for example, and others that are in, you know, kind of a community-type setting. You have the high school, you have the middle school, you have an elementary school, where their expertise could work with phys ed people to talk about diet and other elements that, not just for athletes, but for students in general. I mean, we obviously are continuously hearing about, you know, obesity in children and unhealthy habits. I think, you know, these people can become a real asset in the community and someone that the community recognizes from the get-go. Well, there's Mr. So-and-so, what's he here to talk about today? So I think, you know, as we define those responsibilities, that's something that I think could really become a positive, particularly in some of those communities that have the block area of schools.
Campus.
Yeah, the campus setting.
That's a good point.
Can I ask one quick question, Dr. Wilcox? It was something that I saw and I thought, have been thinking about, the mentor teachers. Are these, these are new positions?
They would be new positions.
And, but they're not lead teachers, I mean, these are.
No, these would be mentor teachers like we eliminated two years ago.
Were the lead teachers, weren't they responsible for the mentoring duties?
We asked, when we reconsolidated the position, we asked the lead teachers to pick up some of the mentoring responsibilities. That has not worked as well as we anticipated.
Good, thank you.
I just have a question that goes along with that. In that instance, then, is there still enough work for a lead teacher if there's mentors?
Absolutely, I think. I think one of the things that the mentor teachers would tell you is they've had to give up some of their duties and responsibilities, whether it be in English or math, or simply in professional development for the teaching practice in the building, in order to do some of the mentoring things that they were asked to do. So I think there would be more than enough work for the lead teachers. I would certainly look into it, but I can't imagine that you'd hear much different than that.
Okay.
I think the one place that we'll probably find, the people saying, I've got too much to do, is the four mentor teachers, who will probably be organized geographically with almost 100 new teachers to the district. So my sense is, is that the four mentor teachers. So my sense is, is that the four mentor teachers will have some geographic, but they're still going to have to take some of the mentor, some of the lead teachers who showed a proficiency for it and perhaps didn't have the same workload, to help them with that process. I would think there'd still be some of that.
That's why I was wondering if we may possibly need more mentor teachers in lieu of as many lead teachers.
I'd want a year to see that, but I think you might be onto something.
Do a couple ask. The letter we received from Children's Village. Is that something we can, is there interest of trying to find some support for that? They seem to have been one of their funding sources.
We did talk about it specifically, but we could before we come back to you.
Just, I put that out there. Also, in the past, we've funded a line item for partnerships for our different schools that want to do a private-public partnership to expand facilities, their sports, or band, or whatever, and I know that that's, line item is still zero, has been, wondering whether there's any thought of trying to put some money back in there. I know facilities, we've received three or four requests recently to partner, and it's like, instead of having it seem arbitrary, if we had money there and people applied for it and
You mean beyond our revolving loan program?
Yes. We used to have a line item, Chris, what was that?
It was about $150,000, as I recall.
That's what I was remembering.
Is that not correct, Eric? Do you recall? Yeah.
And that seems to be a way of trying to give people an opportunity to apply for that, that money.
All right.
And then the other one, I know a few years ago, we had put an amount in for after-school activities at the middle school level, and I think we defunded that. Eric could maybe come up with that amount, that was maybe
No, that's still there.
Is that still there?
It's got a slight increase for next year.
Ah, you caught me on that one.
I think it's $1.00 per student.
Is, what kind of feedback are we getting from that? Do they need more? Because I know that the state's looking at middle school again, there's some legislation. I know that we're constantly sort of struggling with how to appeal to those children.
I was aware of the allocation, but I'm not, I'm not aware of any of the specific programming elements, so we'll have to look into that.
Those are my three specifics.
I'm going to echo your concern about the systemic project funding. If I recall, we have money up through the FY14 budget that we had taken from facilities maintenance and put it into the Vester project. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes.
So this is the last year that, we're finishing the last fiscal year where we took the money from that operating budget item to sort of close the gap on the Vester project. So we would, FY15, finally get our facilities maintenance budget back to where it normally would have been had we not done that. I don't see many options if we're not getting support for our systemic projects, other than to keep pulling that money for systemic capital projects. And my concern is that if we keep doing, you can do that a year or two, as I think we did with Vester, but if you keep doing that, then we run into a problem where we're just digging the hole deeper on the maintenance of our facilities and creating a bigger problem that some future board's going to have to dig us out of. So whether it's, you know, discussing this with the commissioners, or, you know, I think we need to have a plan for how we're going to fund those systemic projects. This board, going back to before I was on it, has worked so hard to get us out of the deferred maintenance backlog that we had many years ago. It would be a shame if now we sort of turn the other way. So whether the plan is to bring it out of our existing budget, which, I mean, I really don't think we ought to do, or to try to work with the commissioners to find a way that we can secure funding for that, I think that should be one of our priorities for the year going forward.
What I would hope is the board can help us advance the case for splitting the discretionary grant that's coming.
The disparity grant.
I'm sorry, I said discretionary, yeah, disparity grant. And they were very generous with that. That allowed us to do great things last year, but if they would dedicate those resources plus
What's the total this year? I didn't bring that with me.
I think two and a half million, I think.
Okay.
But that would be a good start, so, but we could put that on our agenda for our
Discussion for the joint meeting.
But, you know, again, I want to be very clear, I think the county has been just a tremendous partner to us, and they've been open to everything that we've asked them, so I think this just continues that conversation, a great relationship, so.
I think, I think it's been a priority for the commissioners to help with the deferred maintenance. And I think if we can have a discussion in that spirit about how can we work together to keep the momentum, I think they'd be receptive to it.
I know Mr. Murray and Mrs. Murray, who I've worked with recently on a number of issues, very open, very supportive, very complimentary of the district's CIP staff, very complimentary of Chris and his staff, so I think it'd be a great conversation to have.
And one more instant sort of infrastructure question. We've put a lot of money into our back office software. Do we feel like we're getting to where we need to be now that we've done the student information system? We're doing the finance and accounting this year. I know we've done some work with the purchasing software, the purchasing website, we've done some work with HR. Where are we in the overall plan?
I think once we complete the ERP, HRMS system, we will be in very good shape with one exception, and that's with our district website. I think that's probably going to be an expenditure of, in excess of $100,000, to bring that full site up to the capabilities that you're now seeing in the purchasing site and in the HR site. If you haven't visited the HR site lately, you should go. We, again, have done some really nice work there. Laura and her team are also to be complimented, but that's probably the place that we need to go next, is our district website. And then I think we obviously have a lot, I mean, you know, if you give me started on what we need to do, then we have some other internal things. You know, some of our telephone systems are fairly antiquated, not per se in this building, because we've just redone this building, but we have some schools who I think could use some help with their phone systems and things like that, so we still have needs.
Ms. Fisher?
The OECD, OECD test, how much value do you think we're going to get from the data from that test?
I think the individual schools will find it very enlightening. I think what they'll see is that the curriculum that they've taught in previous years is in substantial need of renovation, and I think they'll see that the Common Core-like type of assessment, it's not just hurry up and get there, but you need to get there My hope is that those three schools will share their data then with other schools, not so much about how individuals did, because it's really not about that, but to maybe get us kind of fast-tracking our improvement efforts in high school in particular. I think there'll be great value, actually.
My last question is, what is our current fund balance?
Current fund balance right now is around $11 million, but we haven't closed out this project yet. Once this project's closed out, it'll bring it down to around four.
One food question. Summer food truck that we started last year, are we looking to expand that and would we need to supplement the food services? I know they're an enterprise fund. Is that money all coming from federal sources, or would they need some local dollars?
Actually, we purchased the truck. We purchased a step van, and our maintenance, our garage maintenance staff are working on fitting and retrofitting that truck, so that's going to be a big step in improvement. I think we have some grant funding that's supporting that effort as well, and then our partnership with the community. I don't know if they need additional resources, but I think it worked out very well last year.
I heard a lot of positive feedback, so I didn't know if we were going to expand it, if we needed a second truck, or that's what I was, whether we were trying to serve more students.
We're definitely going to expand the program with a new truck, newer truck. It's an old truck, but it's being refurbished.
Okay.
You should also know that at the CIP Hope-A-Thon, the governor challenged us to step up our lunch participation and our breakfast participation. So feeding young people is an important thing in Maryland right now, so clearly we'll do all we can around our lunch programs as well.
Yes, I had a couple questions. My first one is line items that appear under classroom instructional programs. There are two there that 33.33% increases.
What page?
I'm looking at page 8 of 40. One is for supply the materials, $125,000. I was just wondering if that's a particular initiative, or if that's just inflation, you know, restocking supplies?
Part of our rebalancing, three-year average. If we went back and looked at that particular area, it's an area that has been given additional money through, like, the budget process, and they have spent the last three years around, closer to that amount.
Okay, so it's just giving schools at the elementary level more funds to use?
Yes.
Discretionary?
Yes, it's right sizing that budget.
Okay, okay. And is that true also then of the small equipment supplies that's equal? And that, okay. And then I just had one other, and that was page 10, targeted instructional programs, looking at travel, professional development, zero. So is that, and I'm assuming that this entire category speaks to lead teachers, student achievement specialists, so is this saying that all professional development will be handled in-house, and that our lead teachers and our achievement specialists, all of those people will not have the opportunity to receive professional development outside of the county?
No, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, but I think that's because those teachers actually travel on Title II resources, which are federal program dollars.
Yeah, and all the professional development dollars or more, just a couple pages back, if they're not Title II, they're on page 14, the professional development, this is where all our instructional teachers and folks, it's either charged here, their travel and professional development is charged here, or to Title II.
Okay.
And I believe the lead teachers are charged to Title II.
To Title II.
If you see there, there was, that line's been zeroed for quite some time, and that switch was made some years back to bring it all into that
Right.
Professional development category, subcategory.
Thank you.
Ms. Sorsen?
Go ahead, you're up.
Thank you. I had a question about, it's on page 33 of 40, and this is on the elected board member One of the policies that we have states that we should attend state and national Board of Ed conferences, as well as administrative, which I don't think we've ever gotten any information on those, but the state and national, I know some of us have been to those, as well as serving on committees down at Annapolis, and I think that $5,500, if you add up even the state alone for the state conference, we'd come to over $6,000 if all board members attended. So I would like you to look at this and see if there's any way we can up that. I noticed that in FY13, it was 6,000, but, and it was even less in FY12, and I know that prior to that, at one point in time, it had been over $10,000. So I think if there are seven of us, each of us should have the opportunity to go. Now, I know some people do attend meetings and pay out of their own pockets, but also take it off tax, their tax dollars. So either way, the taxpayers are paying for that, and I would like to see us follow the policy and allow anyone who is willing and able to attend at least the national and the state conferences be permitted to do so. So that would need to be increased to allow for that. So that was my only correction or suggestion, is to check that and see if there's some way we can bring that into balance and allow that to happen. I know that my experience with attending those has been unbelievably helpful, and while you go into the board thinking that you know quite a bit about what's going on, I think you always have room to learn, and that's what I try to instill in my students, that you need to learn something new every day, and I think by attending those, you learn a lot, and I was so grateful that one of my colleagues suggested I attend MAB conferences, and it's been extremely helpful. So I would like to see that available to all of us.
Do you have a specific ask?
Whatever would allow us. We would have to check the amount, like I said, it would be over $6,000 for just the state conference for room and board and travel. So 5,000, that's for one person, or no, that's for all 12, or all seven of us. So if we were talking about the national conference, it's much more expensive because it's located in different places throughout than the nation. So it would have to be based on some figure that would allow for that, and if people absolutely plan to not go, then it could be removed from there, but it's a shame that when somebody is willing to go, that the funds are not available.
Well, I think you're right, that it's, $1,000 is about what it costs to go to the MAB conference per member. The other two conferences or meetings that you mentioned, NSBA and AASA, they're roughly about the same in that, because I looked this up as well, the registration fee is about $750 for each meeting. The airfare, probably $500 if it's an out-of-town meeting, whether it's in San Diego, or New Orleans, or Nashville, as AASA just was. The hotels, you know, for three to four nights at those meetings will probably run $700, $800, because, I mean, they're in inner cities, I mean, inexpensive cities to be in, plus the meals and parking at the airport, taxis, et cetera. For those meetings, it's about $2,000 per meeting. So if one member was going to go to AASA, NSBA, as well as MAB, you're talking probably $5,000 to $6,000 per member.
So we're looking at, what, $40,000 roughly?
If we were going to budget for everybody to go to each of those meetings, it would probably be $40,000 or so.
Well, I know that there are some who have absolutely no intentions of going to any of those, and so in an instance like that, it could even be budgeted down, knowing that someone wouldn't be planning to use that. I just think it's a good idea to make it available, and there, again, it could be a placeholder that could then go back in if it is not used, because even with the state and the national, there are still other expenses that have been turned in, such as travel for Annapolis and dinners that we are expected to attend here in town, and so on. So I just think that this is awfully, an awfully small amount to expect for professional development of seven people who would benefit from the professional development.
I'm not sure how to respond, but, you know, when we signed up for this job, we obviously knew that there were some responsibilities that might tax our time, might tax our finances, whatever the case might be, but we all knew what we were signing up for. And we're looking at going from $5,000 to $35,000, which is an unbelievable jump in any line item that's done directly from kids, as far as what's going on. I can think of a lot of ways to spend $30,000 that would I, I can think of a lot of ways to spend $30,000 that will directly benefit kids. You're talking about being able to buy, oh, let's see, 100 iPads with $30-some thousand. You know, we make choices as to what we can and cannot do as far as conferences, dinners, whatever the case might be. I do not, and I kind of resent, you know, the, the assumption that we pay out of our own pocket and I, and we take it off our taxes. I do not take any money off my taxes for what I do on the board. I take my salary from the board, and I pay, you know, the taxes on that. That's what I do. That's what, how I feel comfortable doing this job. I didn't come into it looking for it. We have a budget. We each now know how much money we have. You sit and decide how you want to use your budget, your budget and amount. And we do it at home, we do it everywhere else. I cannot support, you know, I don't know, what percent, you know, what is, let's see, 600% increase in this line item. You know, when we're asking our employees to take a 1.5% increase. If you want to get 1.5%, I'll buy it. Beyond that, I'm going to have a lot of problems supporting this. Everybody else supports it, so be it. But for me, I would never support that.
Ms. Harsin?
On the contrary, I do think this affects the children because it teaches new board members how to work in the, in the situations that we're placed in, how to make decisions that affect the children, not themselves, but the children, and how to handle situations in a professional way. And I think that under those conditions, that would be of great benefit to all of us. And I am not asking this to be raised to $30,000. I'm asking this to be raised so that the people who are interested in going may go, not the ones who are not interested. Thank you.
Well, and again, I'm not going to sit and argue all day over something like this. But you're saying the people that are interested, you know, who knows who's going to be interested on a specific date?
Well, we could look at the past.
No, 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 it's my turn, I have the floor, thank you. I have the floor.
Well, I don't believe you were recognized, but that's all right.
Mr. President, do I have a floor?
I don't, I don't, I don't think we want to get into having this run like a classroom.
I don't either.
You had the chance to speak. Let's, Mr. Ride now, you have the chance to speak, and then we'll see what the board wants to do.
So, again, going back to that, it's a determination that's made by each individual board member, whether or not they want to take advantage of the money that's in that line item for their travel and expenses. It's up to them. I choose not to use it. Other members choose not to use it. Some choose to use it. I don't have a problem either way. But we have a budgeted amount. We live within budgets. Every one of us live within a budget. We do it at home, we do it here, we do it in our businesses. So, you know, I think we should do the same thing. As I said, if we're going to ask our people, you know, to, to accept a 1, 1.5% raise in that line item, then I think, I don't, I, I'm not comfortable taking a, what did I say? 500%, 600% increase in that line item. So I will not support it. If you wish to support it, others wish to support it, as I said. As a board member, I will bow and support the will of the board. If there are four people that want to raise that line item, fine, let's go for it. If not, this is my position.
Could I, could I just ask one question?
Sure.
How many people are intending to attend the Maryland conference?
I think that's irrelevant, Mrs.
Well, that's the money, that's what it's.
No, it's, Mr. President.
It says, if, if it doesn't say in the policy that we are expected to attend the Maryland and the national, should, what does that mean to you? As an English teacher, it means that's what you should do. If you don't do that, there are consequences, which mean, obviously, you didn't attend and didn't find out the information that was given there. So should attend those.
Well, I think, I think we have a, I think we have a policy that sets out how the travel dollars on that line get distributed among members. And I know I've had other members on the board ask me if, in accordance with the new policy, if they can use some of the funds that were allocated towards me to help defer the cost of their travel. So it really is a pot that goes to the board, that has allocations for each member, but that members can provide to other members if they don't intend to use them. So I think we have a process in place that allows, provided there's enough money in the budget for people to go, that allows one member, if they don't intend to use it, to let somebody else use it. Now, that said, I, I would certainly be willing to increase the amount on that line. I'm not willing to go to enough so that everybody has enough in their budget to go to all meetings. Mrs. Williams?
I, I'd like to suggest that we look at, under supplies and materials, the line item that's food and meals. It looks like there's $10,000 allocated for that. I'm assuming that that's to pay for the, the meals that we have, whether it be lunch or dinner.
14.
Between board meetings. Is it possible to take 5,000 of that, since it looks like in '13, we spent, what, $5,400, or thereabout? Is it possible to take, say, 5,000 of that, or 4,000 of that, and increase the, the board travel line item?
We certainly could, if that's a consensus to the board.
And that would, that would at least increase the amount very quickly, I guess, doing the math. It would raise it not much, but...
Well, it would almost double it.
It would, it would double it.
I mean, that's, that's just a suggestion that...
Okay.
Is that original 10,000, were we expecting an increase in our food cost? I'm just curious if there was a reason I'm not aware of, or were not aware of.
Budget's been 10,000.
I don't, it's just been 10,000 for quite some time.
But we're going to be here eating now, are we not?
I don't think your, your prices will be significantly different than the sandwich prices. I mean, we get a pretty modest lunch for chips and things for you. I don't think there's going to be a big savings, but it also covers, like, soft drinks and things like that that you have when you're in a workshop or whatever. Again, I, I think it's, you could reallocate some of it, but I think historically, it's always been right around 10,000. I think the line you see it for 12 is an actual number, so.
Doesn't that also include, on the years we have an election, the buffet that's put out?
It does.
For them.
So, so for example, this year, what do you have, money would come out of there for that?
Well, 12 was 5,000, and 13 was 5,000.
But remember, there was a year you didn't, they didn't, the, the year that I came, I think you were, you were just starting to come back to having lunches because you'd had some budget discussion before where you didn't have budgets. I, I think that's true.
I think we just ordered our own lunches, and that's all that was paid for by us, instead of a whole group.
I'm just, I just, I, I think that whatever you choose to do, we can do. That's not the issue, so.
Well, that's the, that's the only, I, we're getting towards the end of our allotted hour and a half, in fact, past the allotted end of our hour and a half. And that's the only item that I think I've heard any suggestion of providing direction from the board to Dr. Wilcox. Is there anything other than this issue that board members would like to offer direction, or see if there's consensus for direction? Mr. Bailey?
On page eight of 40, under the...
And we'll come back to this.
The athletic trainers. The, the incremental expenditures, 414, and that, and the line item lists 294. Could you clarify that for me?
Yes, that, the 294 is purely the salary amount, and the, the additional to the 400,000 that you mentioned is for the, the health insurance. Assuming, our average employee's around 13.8 for people who take health insurance. So we're including that in FICA and workers' comp. So it's just the benefits piece on top of the salaries.
I'm okay.
Okay. Anything else that anybody seeks to provide any direction, or see if there is board direction for?
If, if we're just citing specific items that we talked about on our wants list, I really think the athletic trainers are important.
Thank you, Johnny.
I agree too.
Yes.
Absolutely.
I think there's full support, yeah.
Anything else? Well, let me make a suggestion, following up on Mrs. Williams' suggestion. On the elected board member services, if you look at line 21, there were $2,500 for communications. And I'm trying to remember what that was. Part of that may have been money that was put in when we did the superintendent search, or... But the actuals for that have been zero for a while. Let me see.
Page just from the pages, I said.
33.
33.
33 of 40, line 21.
And in fact, the superintendent has recommended rolling that into the other miscellaneous line. So if we were to take 2,500 from the communications and put it into travel for the board, and then take 1,500 from the food meals line, as Mrs. Williams suggested, that would add $4,000 to the travel budget. That way, we're not, we're not risking pushing the, the food line down too far. And we're also then repurposing those funds that were in communications that I, I think were really not, we haven't used in the last few years, and it doesn't, unless Dr. Wilcox has plans he hasn't told us about, that we don't necessarily have a plan for in the next year. I, I'll just put that out for discussion. That would, that would put the travel line to 9,500, which would be enough for, certainly for a member to go to...
MAE.
All three conferences, two, two members to go to NSBA, and a couple of members to go to MAE. I think it would give us a lot more, a lot of opportunities for members to go to conferences, although not an opportunity for every member to go to every conference. So that's what I'm going to suggest.
I can support that.
That would be, Dr. Wilcox, tell me, $1,400 per member. Is there, Ms. Fisher, you have something? You look like you were about to say something.
I support moving the 2,500.
Okay.
But especially since it's election year, I don't think we should touch the food budget.
Okay. Any other comments? Well, let me, let me first ask if there is consensus to provide direction to the superintendent for my suggestion, which is the 2,500 plus 1,500. If there's not, then we'll ask if there's consensus for just the 2,500. And if there's not consensus for that, then it's going to stay the way it is. Unless somebody has another suggestion they'd like to seek consensus on. All right, I, I don't see any, so.
The first question?
Is there, is there consensus to direct the superintendent to reduce the communications budget line item by $2,500, put that into the board travel budget, and to reduce the food meals budget by $1,500, and put that $1,500 additionally into the board travel budget? Is there consensus to support that? Okay, we have four votes to support that. Is there anything else that anybody wants to discuss on the budget? I too want to thank Dr. Wilcox, Mr. South, and his staff for... I'm sure we'll all have more to say about it in a couple of weeks when we consider final approval of the budget.
Hopefully, not much, though.
I want to thank you all for preparing this for today, and we look forward to working with you over the next month or so to get this budget adopted by the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further comments? We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.